Good evening everyone. Tonight we will be using a new system to conduct public comment. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number from the city clerk and speakers will be called up to speak by number. When your number is called, please approach the podium and hand your number card to the city clerk. The time clock will begin when you are at the podium. Lining up will not be permitted and each speaker shall remain in their seat until their number is called. For all future meetings, number cards will be issued by the city clerk 15 minutes prior to the start of the council meeting. If you did not receive a number and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room and Lisa Fox will give you a number card. I would like to call to order the regular city council closed session meeting and the time is 5:33 PM. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Yes Mayor, Councilmember Prometa?
Present.
Councilmember LaPlante?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Alvarez?
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Present. City Clerk Duarte, have you received any written correspondence on closed session items to be read into the record?
We have not Mayor.
And how many speakers do we have that have taken a number?
We have three Mayor.
Okay, and this is with respect to closed session items only. So each speaker will have four minutes to address the council on closed session items. So may I have speaker number one, please approach the podium and hand your speaker card to the city clerk. Do you have your speaker card, Mr. Herman?
Uh, I think so.
Can you hand it to the clerk?
Uh, I don't have it right here. No.
Did you get a speaker card?
Yeah.
Yeah Mommy? Okay. Let me proceed.
I'll find it, I'll look for it later. You know. Uh, so today's um special regarding uh public safety and that of the uh City Employees Association along with the labor negotiations um. I'm finding it very offensive that uh Mr. Um former uh John Iscooy wasn't a part of this um activity under um the following authorities of closed session government. Because you know Mr. Iscooy never gave us the time and place mommy Mayor or yourself to explain to us under the um labor negotiations whether or not Mr. Iscooy was basically a criminal or not.
Mr. Herman, that's not on the agenda.
Well, it it has to do with the agenda under labor negotiator because we the taxpayers of Downey never negotiated that he be paid while he was staying home. And we find that very offensive. So in regard to that, I want to state into the record US 395 444 1969 Brandon Burke versus Ohio, a dirty nigger when it comes to labor negotiation.
Mr. Herman, it's about city employees?
Yeah miscellaneous unit and the other one has to do with the maintenance unit mommy. So that's why I use the term a dirty nigger. And as Kanye Wade would say, hey. Send them back to Israel.
He's not on topic.
Now I'm going into item three asshole. I am on topic and I'll read it into the record. The attorney knows I'm on the on the record here and I'm gonna read it directly the way you want to hear it. Government Code Section 5495 7.6. Fucking conference with fucking labor negotiations. Fucking James McQueen regarding fucking direction for fucking labor negotiations with the fucking Public Safety Auxiliary Association, so I'm on topic.
You said you were gonna read it.
Mr. Mr. Herman, do you need a break?
No, I read it. I keep getting a disturbance on this side of the council shoe because I'm reading my account on my ability but I'm being disrupted during my fucking three minutes, Madam Mayor. So get the chango over there.
Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, you are not on topic.
Yes I am. I read right now number three, okay? You want me to reiterate and read it into the record again? I have a right to read this topic into the record but I keep getting mixed up by people who engage in my public time mommy. You want to be the assemblywoman?
Mr. Herman.
Yes ma'am.
Proceed with what's on the agenda.
Okay, so like I said. Labor negotiations with Downey Public Safety Auxiliary Association. Now, the public don't need no explanation about auxiliary association because we know that crime is based on, again, and I'll put it on record. For example, example case number 220 CR triple zero 35 JFW dash one. There, it's on record regarding, yes, United States America versus Mitchell Inlander. A corrupted politician, criminal activity of public safety, public enemy number one. He was, as I said, this is an example on public safety in Los Angeles, accused me of turning a weapon in the city hall, 42 USC 1983 politely. Fuck you, I didn't do that. Otherwise I would have been in jail with Mr. Trujillo as my defense. But it didn't ever happen.
It's not happening.
So thank you. So when I turn in my my public.
For future for future speakers, please stay on topic.
Number card one. There it is. Speaker number two.
Uh can you please hand your speaker card to our city clerk?
I'll try my best to keep myself on topic Mayor mommy. You folks ready? How far is a nigger to go, yeah? What are we going to do with the niggers? The dirty niggers, send the Jews back to Israel. Let's give them back to the dark world and save America. Let's go back to constitutional bitterness.
Speaker number two. I'm going to be removed if you are not on topic.
Give us our state rights, freedom.
Speaker number two.
Niggers, we all have to fight for every inch he gets from now on.
Speaker number two.
Okay. Actually I had a quick question. We're going to go back on topic. Or actually I've been on topic. Uh number three. Code section 549 57.6. I would like to actually know and if you could help me because I'm deaf, dumb and blind and homeless, if you could help me with that too. Cause I think the city of Downey also has some kind of special program for homeless people. I'm not sure what the moniker is but if you could help me. But I would like to know since I'm so stupid, deaf, dumb and blind. Public Safety Auxiliary Association, can you help me with that? I don't understand, can you help me mommy?
Are you done speaker number two?
Actually I'll read something else. Let's see. Uh where do I apply for homelessness in the city of Downey? I'd like to come over here and live here but I don't know where to apply.
Okay speaker number two, can we please have him escorted out? Please, we've already given him a warning and I gave him a warning.
I didn't get a warning.
I gave him a warning.
I didn't get a warning. Can you help me Mr. Trujillo in your beautiful Audi or shouting?
Just move.
No, I didn't get a warning, that's okay. It's called uh constitutional right, freedom of speech, right? I didn't get a warning.
Next time you will be removed. This is your warning, if you cannot stay on topic, that means on one, two or three, we will have you removed.
This is America, hail to the Jews.
Speaker number three. It's on the closed session, correct?
No, actually I have something um just general common.
Oh.
I'm unaware of this.
It's for the closed session, that would be for the 6:30 meeting.
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll need to give you a different card. Okay. We will now reconvene the regulars, well. The city council is going to recess to a closed session of the city council under the following authorities. One, Government Code Section 5495 7.6 Conference with Labor Negotiator James McQueen regarding direction for labor negotiations with Downey City Employees Association Miscellaneous Unit. Government Code Section 5495 7.6 Conference with Labor Negotiator James McQueen regarding direction for labor negotiations with Downey City Employees Association Maintenance Unit. And Government Code Section 5495 7.6 Conference with Labor Negotiator James McQueen regarding direction for labor negotiations with Downey Public Safety Auxiliary Association. We will now proceed to closed session.
We will now reconvene the regular city council closed session meeting. Madam City Attorney, will you please report the closed session action?
Yes, good evening. The city council recessed into closed session to discuss the three items of business listed on the posted agenda. The council discussed direction for labor negotiations with the three listed labor units and took no reportable action. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And the regular city council closed session meeting is now adjourned. The time is 6:34 PM. Before I begin the regular city council meeting, I would like to have, I would like to make an announcement. Tonight, we will be using a new system to conduct public comment. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment must obtain a number from the city clerk. And speakers will be called up to speak by number. When your number is called, please approach to the podium and hand your number card to the city clerk. The time clock will begin when you are at the podium. Lining up will not be permitted, and each speaker should remain in their seat until their number is called. For all future meetings, numbers cards will be issued by the city clerk 15 minutes prior to the start of the council meeting. If you did not receive a number and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room. And Lisa Fox, who is back there with her hand up, will give you a number card. I would now like to call or the regular city council meeting at 6:35 PM. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometa?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Protem Alvarez?
Present.
Councilmember LaPlante?
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Present. I would now like to have Councilmember Fromeda do the invocation for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, if we can please stand.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we want to say thank you tonight for the blessings that you bestow upon us every day. Thank you for this city. Thank you for the first responders, police, and fire who continue to keep our city safe. And thank you, Lord, for this council and the people that continue to do the work of the people in this city. We pray for this meeting. We pray that your presence will be here, and we pray for wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of the residents of the city of Downey. We pray all these things in your son's name, amen. I would now like to have Michael Calver, please come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. I can ask you to please stand and put your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, welcome everyone to our city council meeting. Now is the time in the agenda where we have city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference meeting reports. I'll start off to my far left with Councilmember Trujillo.
Good evening. Welcome to your council meeting. First and foremost, I want to congratulate State Gallery. It's been 10 years since this, well, the city with the council at that time decided to invest in arts and culture. And together, they came up with State Gallery. They're celebrating 10 years. If you have an opportunity, please go check out our gallery. Ceritos College, state of the college. Thank you for the invitation. I actually went to Ceritos twice in the last two weeks. Ceritos College is Downey's community college. It is absolutely fantastic to see the growth that the college has undertaken in the last 33 years since I've been here at Downey. Congratulations to Dr. Fiero for all the amazing work. Ceritos College is Downey's community college. My daughter went to Ceritos College and then she transferred and now is getting ready to apply to law school. I'm thankful for Ceritos College. If you've ever thought, or if you know anyone that wants to pursue college, please have them consider Ceritos. We hosted the mayor of Tecolotran Jalisco. I attended a red ribbon opening for Code Four Private Security. Welcome to Downey. The mayor's prayer breakfast, fantastic speaker, USC former player Dave Davis.
He Davis.
Yeah, fantastic speaker. Downey Symphony, I'm a little worried about the attendance at our beautiful theater for our amazing symphony. It's a discussion we're going to have to have. I think the next level is basically try to see if we can get sponsors so we can make it free to our families. But I was concerned about the attendance at the Downey Symphony. Continue to meet with residents. If you have any issues in your neighborhood, you can email me mtrujillo@downeyca.org. Want to give an update. And first and foremost, let me say that to the men and women employed by our city, thank you. As we transition with our city leadership, I want to acknowledge our employees who are basically manning the ship, if you will, as we navigate through this transition. Some people have referenced and used the word chaos as to what's going on in the city. I want to let you know that I check in regularly with our department heads, particularly with the chief, to talk about, to try to get a pulse of what's going on in the city. And we're making great progress, specifically just to point out that the Trujillo Brass Plan in the areas of broadband, residential street alleys, sidewalks, and street lighting, we have delivered for you, the residents, in two years since we've been here. We've seen the largest single infrastructure investment in our city. And I want to give particular thanks and recognition to Delfino. Mr. Coogee, congratulations to you and your department for undertaking the amazing work that we're seeing in our alleys, our sidewalks. When I came into this council, the sidewalks along Lakewood Boulevard, where we had previously made large investments, the sidewalks just were not up to par. I invite you to go look at the sidewalks now. That's your council at work. Street lighting, now is a chance to let us know if you think you need street lighting on your block or in your neighborhood. It's a simple click. It's a form you fill out, and we're going to get to work to see what we could do about street lighting. Look, right now, we just need to identify where we need street lighting. We will get to how we're going to pay for it next. Obviously, we don't want to pass the cost on to residents, but that may be the case. Congratulations to Prologis on the opening of a beautiful trucking center that is available for lease on Woodrow Ave. I toured Allen House with LA Cada. I went to the state of the district address with Senator Lena Gonzalez in our neighboring city of Bell. Thank you for the invitation. And one agenda item, I would like to know what the status is on trees in Downey. Where are we? How do we compare to neighboring cities when it comes to the tree canopy, I think it's called? I would like some information in that. I would also like to know if there are any cities that have ordinances banning the future installation of chain link fences. As I drive around, particularly in District One, and looking for ways to beautify the locations, the property, which will lead to increased and looking for ways to beautify the locations, the property, which will lead to increased property values, looking out for our residents and their investment. I think if we take a program that will perhaps cover chain link fences with greenery, right? Maybe we could participate with homeowners to try to cover up some of these chain link fences, but definitely look into prohibiting chain link fences. I, I, I'm looking for ways to improve your community. So if staff could look into that. Madam Mayor, with that, I apologize for the lengthy report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Fromeda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this month's edition of your council meeting. Welcome to those that are watching us via YouTube and our various modes of communication. Engage communities are strong communities. Michael Calver, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, welcome. Thank you for joining us, and thank you all of you. I do have a number of items that I would like to report on. And again, why do we do this? We want to ensure that our community understands and knows that we are attending various events on your behalf, and we will also give you some announcements and some asked, some items for our city staff and our interim city manager. Breast cancer awareness is the month of October, and our Downey Police Department held their Pink Patch fundraiser project on October thirteenth. I was happy to be there. Thank you for continuing to conduct this annual project. Much appreciated. The, I also attended, and I want to say happy duwali to our Indian community who celebrated the Festival of Lights yesterday. I had the pleasure of attending their event on October fourteenth. We have, Downey has a significantly large Indian population, Indian community, and as we always say, we are the community we are because of the richness of our cultures and the communities that bring together all of the different customs and traditions. So very happy duwali to our Indian community. Last Saturday, the Downey Rose Flower Association held its sixty-sixth annual pageant. Congratulations to the new two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three court. I look forward to seeing these young women represent our city with distinction. The Downey versus Warren game also held on October fourteenth. It was another fantastic friendly rivalry game that has brought our community together for many years. Many of us, Warren Bears and Downey Vikings come together. And I do want to give a shout out to the Downey Foundation of Educational Opportunities for once again hosting the V I P reception. In this reception, the funds that it raises goes back to the foundation so that it goes, it funds the various programs for our Downey children and youth in our schools. Some announcements regarding upcoming events throughout our city. I do want to let you know that tomorrow, Wednesday at seven P M, residents of District Four are invited to attend an informational meeting at Rio San Gabriel. And we need your input as we plan a new playground and park features. Rio San Gabriel happens to be in the district that I represent. And as you recall, last year during my mayoral year, I responded to my residents' request to invest in our park and fix the fields. If you recall, we did significant investments to all of our parks through Measure S. Rio San Gabriel was not included in those renovations. As a former landfill, there were many things going on with that park. And if you recall, we filmed the video with our Director of Public Works, Delfino, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I do know we invested several hundred thousands of dollars in that field. In fact, it was closed for several months and to make sure all of those gopher holes were patched up. But aside from that, earlier this year, thanks to the L A County Regional Park and Open Space District, this park, Rio San Gabriel, received a one million dollar grant for parks renovations and ADA compliance enhancements. And so again, I, we want to make sure that our community is aware that tomorrow at seven o'clock, there is an open meeting, seven P M, and you are welcome to come and help us design the children's playground and some of the parks' features you want. I have to say, I will not be there as it is my birthday tomorrow, and I do have plans with my family. But I know the rest of Parks and Recreation staff will be there to make sure they listen to what our residents want and need. This Saturday, October twenty-ninth, the DEA National Drug Takeback is scheduled, and our Downey Police Department will be collecting old and unused medications from ten A M. to two P M. in the parking lot over at our Downey Unified School District office. Also, this Saturday, October twenty-ninth, it is the Ninth Annual Dia de los Muertos festival happening in right outside our theater, our civic center area and our library. As you know, this is the, considered the largest Dia de los Muertos festival in the L A region. And so we invite you to come out and enjoy with your families. For Halloween, Monday, October thirty-first, we will have the annual pumpkin patch at the Downey Adult School with carnival games, crafts, food trucks, face painting and fun for the whole family. I know there's been some concern regarding fentanyl. And I know that we hear about this just about every other day in the news. And as you know, about sixty hun- six hundred thousand of these rainbow colored pills were were, were found at LAX. And I got to tell you, as your council member, as your representative, this is something that is very top of mind for me, as not only as a healthcare professional and as an elected official, but also as a mother. And I want to let you know that work is underway and conversations are happening with our school district, with our assistant superintendent. And as you may have heard, the County Board of Supervisors voted last week to provide Narcan sprays to all of county libraries. Similarly, I want to propose that my council colleagues consider that we include Narcan sprays in our library, our Memorial Space Center and our Barbara J. Riley Senior Centers. I think these are areas where we have significant traffic of families, children and young, youth, young adults. And while we understand our police department is ready and is equipped, it is important that we have these items available. Furthermore, I do want to let the community know that I want to ensure that we have Narcan spray in every school in our city. Additionally, I am also supporting a newly formed parent group called Wolf, War on Lethal Fentanyl, and I will be attending an upcoming meeting on November the tenth. I think it is critical that we come together as a community to inform and educate our parents and keep our families and our youth safe. I say this right after my, my Halloween announcement because I know there's been a lot of parents and a lot of angst about trick or treating and about candy. And so again, we, from a city standpoint, we provide safe environments and safe places for our community and our families to gather. And so please keep that in mind and changing gears a little bit, the Center for Military Veterans Reintegration, as you know, that opened up earlier this year here in our library. And they will be hosting a workshop on Thursday, November third, from six to seven P M. at the Downey Library. And this is on understanding credit and home buying. And so if you are a veteran or you are a family of a veteran that is reintegrating back to society, please pass on this information. There's a lot of this information, folks, in our city's social media platforms, and I will encourage you to, to follow them, the City of Downey Government Agency social media platform, as well as Discover Downey and the Instagram pages. There's a lot of this information available. As my council colleague mentioned, the City of Downey is accepting petitions to add more streetlights to your neighborhoods. If you are interested or need more, more information on the process, please call five six two nine oh four seven one one zero. I want to remind our residents to download the Downey app to report illegal dumping, broken lights and/or issues of concern in your neighborhoods. Last week, I had the pleasure of meeting with the Executive Director of St. Louis Resource Center. This is a multi-service organization that connects people to available health insurance and nutrition program and also provides referrals to other social service agencies. People with home insecurity, food insecurity. Also, last month, I attended the grand opening of The Whole Child, another excellent nonprofit organization that provides similar services to families in need. I want to ask our interim city manager and the city staff to include St. Louis Resource Center and The Whole Child to provide a, I want them similarly to what we do with Ferias Legales. I want to be able to have, provide a space at our Barbara J. Riley for a monthly community health access services fair. These are organizations in the community that, that have the, the various services and that can connect people to a wealth of information and resources completely free. And I know that they would be very much wanting to come out on a, on a monthly basis. In fact, if we can coordinate with Ferias Legales, some people may want, may need legal resources while other people need health access services. And last, but not least, communication and coordination with local neighborhoods. I know we have a lot of street paving and rehabilitation going on, and as we continue with those aggressive efforts as Councilmember Trujillo just mentioned. Keeping in mind, we've had a street management plan for the last several years and, and things that wheels of government don't turn as quickly as we would like them to. This has been in, in the process for, for quite some time. I want to inform our city staff that we receive complaints regarding trash not being able to be picked up during a time of repavement in some areas. So if we can please, when there is scheduled of repayment or rehabilitation in some places, if we can make sure our neighborhoods are advised or are informed ahead of time. Also, I also need to ask to look at the current street rehabilitation management plan. As I continue to hear from residents in District Four, their streets, certain streets have not been touched in twenty-five to thirty years. However, they've seen neighboring streets being done again and again. So we need to, I think, take a look at that. Last but not least, patrols. I know we don't have a huge police department and crime continues to get us really busy, but we must continue to look at what's happening in our major streets. Looking at street racing, speeding and street racing, that continues to be an issue. With days getting darker sooner, people are still doing their evening walks and speeding through neighborhoods is a big concern. So I don't know if we can continue in certain, certain segments of our, of our major thoroughfares, put the the speeding. How would you call it? The speed trailer. Thank you, thank you. I think that sometimes seems to assist quite a bit. Madam Mayor, my apologies for such a lengthy report, but I thank you. That will conclude my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember LaPlante.
Okay, I have this, I have the microphone on, IT staff. Thank you for the reminder. Ms. Fromeda, the Rio San Gabriel event tomorrow, I assume is at Rio San Gabriel Park, but I wanted to clarify that because there is a school with the same name.
It's Rio San Gabriel Park, yes.
I want, I don't want some, some set of people getting confused and winding up at the wrong place going, well, where's the meeting?
Yes, Rio San Gabriel Park. Thank you.
No problem. And the, for the people looking for the Halloween on event, a lot of people are unaware where the Downey Adult School is. It's the same location as Columbus High School over on Woodruff, so.
Woodruff and Imperial.
Yeah, depending on what you've listened to that by. Where, I have a question for Keith Herlock. I, I'm hearing that the police department has Narcan. I assume the fire department has it on there.
I'm sorry. I wanted to piggyback on that. I didn't want to assume that, do all our patrol vehicles have Narcan? I didn't want to assume that we do. Sorry, Councilmember LaPlante.
No problem.
Yes, all of our patrol officers are equipped with Narcan.
And all of the fire engines are paramedic assessment engines, and they do carry Narcan as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we had that out there very clear that the police department has it, the fire department has it, any first responder that goes up, the first person there can handle it. And for Ms. Fromeda, the school district has had Narcan at every school site since last year.
Excellent.
In the Downey Unified School District, I cannot obviously speak to any knowledge of private school, but we could probably make sure that they do also because they, they're certainly subject to the same issues that any other organization dealing with children from five to eighteen are dealing with now. I attended the same events Mr. Trujillo did for Cerritos College, the mayor's prayer breakfast, very intriguing. There's some trick, I know, to pulling a frying pan, a metal frying pan in half, but Keith Davis managed to do it, and I couldn't figure out because I was sitting close enough to watch him. I couldn't figure out what the trick was that he had pulled off, but very interesting to watch. I also attended the opening for Code Four Security and Prologis for the Downey Warren game. I would note that both teams do have B one quarterbacks. One of them, Nico Amalava, is heading off to Tennessee, and the quarterback from Downey is heading to Oregon State, so. Good people coming out of our programs in this city. Both schools will be in the C I F playoffs. The way the playoffs are structured now, they, it's highly unlikely they would face each other so they could both win a championship, so. And we were the ballet game of the week, and they, as I watched it later, they were raving about the community and what was going on in our community. And I walked out there with the rest, the school board, I was invited since I'd been there forty years, to bring the coin out to toss it. And Mrs. Sam Perry, the school board president, was supposed to be the one tossing it, except she couldn't, her hands were shaking too bad. She was having arthritis attack that afternoon, that evening, and she just handed it to me and said, you do it. So for the, probably the first time in history, a fire department challenge coin actually did, did a the badge was, the badge was had and the shield was tails. And it was the only thing Downey High won all night. They wanted a coin toss. And I did not attend the tenth anniversary for State Gallery. I was busy attending the fiftieth high school reunion for the class of seventy-two of Warren High School, and the only thing that showed up was a bunch of old people. Couldn't believe all these people. Fortunately, at least I had more hair than a few, than a lot of them, so that was a good thing. And I want to commend the city staff and the very, all of our departments, but particularly the ones that interfaced with the public community development, parks and recs, fire, police, public works, for all their hard work. In the times of change in the city, they are the people who are making all the services happen for the citizens. And the citizens who are not paying attention to what's going on at City Hall are getting the same quality services they've been getting all along. And most of them, if they aren't paying attention to all the others' fluff, they're, they're perfectly happy. They're getting good police services. They're getting good fire services, public works, parks, community development. Great work from all of them, and the public should be appreciative of that. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mayor Protem Alvarez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have no comments today, but I wanted to say, welcome everyone today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you, everyone, and welcome to your city council meeting. I want to thank you for being here this evening and also to those watching us virtually, thank you for joining us. I did want to mention a couple of people in the audience. We have Alfred Tovar, Public Works Committee Member. Thank you for joining us, Alfred. And also our police officers, Downey Police Officers, thank you for joining us. Give them all a round of applause. So I had a very, very extreme couple of weeks, so I'll try to make this as quickly as possible. I attended the state of the colleges at Cerritos College, which is a school that I attended. I also attended the mayor's prayer breakfast and also attended the Downey PD's Pink Patch, Pink Patch Project Lazy Dog. And also then attended the Downey versus Warren game. I, of course, attended Downey High School, but Warren won and they did an amazing job. So congratulations. I'll say it, go Bears. Also, I attended a reception. Also, I attended a reception honoring Assembly Speaker Anthony Rendon and Assemblywoman Christina Garcia over at Cerritos College. I was also invited to speak at the Whittier Lions Club and also invited to speak at the Women's Auxiliary of St. George's Greek Orthodox Church. And then I also attended the Norwalk State of the City, because it's important to attend the State of the Cities from our neighboring cities, given that whatever happens in those cities will obviously affect us here in the city of Downey. And then I also attended State Gallery's 10-year celebration and art exhibit. So I just want to say a huge congratulations to State Gallery for bringing the arts and culture to our city throughout the 10 years. And then this Thursday is my State of the City event at the Rio Honda Event Center. So please attend if you're available and if you need tickets, you can see Michael Calvert in the back. This Saturday is our Dia de los Muertos event over at the Downey Theater from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Please join us for activities, face paintings and some great food. On November 1st, this is a special event. We are having a plaque unveiling for our former city manager, Gilbert Livas. This will be at the Downey Promenade and the time of that event will be 10:00 AM. Also, I want to remind everyone, no matter how you vote, please vote. The election is November 8th. Everyone has their ballots, so make your voice and your vote count. So the important thing is vote. No matter how you vote, just vote. And just as a reminder, we do have a ballot drop-off box in front of City Hall, so you can always drop off your ballot there. And I also want to thank staff. I want to thank the department heads for everything that you do. We have dealt with some trying times and I want to commend all of you for your hard work and dedication to Delfino. I want to thank you. I feel like I bother you the most because I text you the most with all of this street potholes or issues that we have. But I would like to see, this is something I've been working on for a while. I get a lot of complaints about accidents happening at Artis and Gardendale. There's no stop sign or there's no traffic signal. I believe the last time was that Public Works came back with that, was that it was warranted. So maybe, I know this is going to be a tough one because it's an intersection that borders that is actually in Downey and also in Bowflower, but I want to see where we are with that. Because I know this is something that we've been working on for a while and I do get several messages here and there as to an update, so hopefully maybe at the next meeting, we can get an update as to the intersection of Artis and Gardendale. And that concludes my comments, so I will go ahead and proceed down for my presentations. So the first award that I have is for the Mayor's Unsung Hero Award. This award is given to an individual, an individual who works for the city of Downey and has gone above and beyond the call of duty and has done something exemplary for the community. And this person has done just that. They went above and beyond than what was expected and for that, they are Downey's unsung hero. So this is a little bit about what this individual did. And I'd like to invite him up if he's here, Corporal Zamora. So this is what this amazing corporal did. During this past summer, while Corporal Zamora was working as a day shift patrol officer, he made contact with a woman who had reported that her bike was stolen. The woman was extremely upset, which is understandable. She had made the effort to secure her bike using a bike chain, but the bike chain had been cut and someone stole her bike. And while speaking to the woman, Corporal Zamora, Zamora realized that this bicycle was her only mode of transportation. And so he obtained all the information he needed with respect to the theft, but he went one step further. Recognizing that this crime had such a significant impact on this woman, he offered to purchase her a new bicycle. So he drove her to Walmart and he let her pick a brand new bicycle, which he himself purchased. And this victim was obviously overwhelmed with gratitude. And I found out about this act of kindness through social media. And I knew instantly that we needed to give him this recognition and this award. Because not every day do you meet this kind of act of kindness. This is something that we should all do and this is something that should be celebrated. This is something that should be in the news. We need to be a little more positive and we need to help each other. And so we need more heroes like you. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you do every day, but this special act of kindness. So let's give him a round of applause. I have this award for you.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, I appreciate the recognition. Although I did not do it for the recognition, I just, that day, I did it for good reasons and it's for for appreciation that we, that things we have in our lives. And for that day, I knew that this victim was having a horrible day, so I wanted to make it better for her. And although in a profession, we're often told to not, to think, not take things personal, right? Chief, I apologize. I took that personal because when I was talking to her, it's as if I was talking to my own grandmother. And seeing as if, the tears in her eyes as they were flowing down and knowing that her life could have, was changing because of the theft of the bicycle, I wanted to make it up for her and, and get her on her day and get her a new bike. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And for the Mayor's Impact Award, I would like to invite up Chief Murray to assist, but I would also like to invite up Councilmember LaPlante.
So first off, I'm very proud of the work that Corporal Zamora did and it's just indicative of all the good work that our men and women of the Downey Police Department do, really on a regular basis. This is an exemplary example, but I'm very proud of the men and women at the police department. You'll not find a more compassionate, empathetic group of men and women that are really here to serve our community. And with that, I think it's been our tradition at the Downey Police Department, and that leads me into the Mayor's Impact Award. And tonight, being recognized for the Mayor's Impact Award is retired police officer Jeff Tusing. And Jeff, can I ask you to come up, please? So I want to tell you about Jeff and some of the reasons that Jeff is being recognized today. So Jeff has been a valuable member of the Downey Police Department for over 40 years. He was hired on September 15th, 1975, before many of our police officers were even born. He was hired as a police officer recruit and after he graduated from the academy, Jeff went on to be a patrol officer. He worked as a dare officer and I still run into adults in the city of Downey that says, is Corporal Tusing still there? And I can tell him he still is. So after being a dare officer, he was also a K-9 handler for the police department. And in November of 2004, Jeff retired from the police department with 30 years of service or just close to 30 years of service. But that wasn't enough for Jeff. After about four years, I think he realized like he still missed that connection. And Jeff's always remained a friend to all of us. And he came back and he applied to be a part-time IT technician at the police department. And he continued for the next 11 years to work with us in a part-time capacity, supporting a lot of our IT endeavors. So he, he made sure our body worn cameras were working, our in-car cameras were working, and he was just there to assist in any way he could. On the side, Jeff is very handy and he's always been very helpful in, in, with construction projects. He worked side-by-side with our Public Works Department. And that took us to, let's see. October 1st, 2019, he retired from IT position. And when he did so, though he was retiring, he asked, can I still stay on and volunteer? Because he still felt a commitment to the organization. And he's been back since then doing volunteer work. And so every time we need help with an IT project or a construction project, we know we can call on Jeff and he's there to help. And Jeff has this way of being super meticulous about everything he does. If you know anything about Jeff, you know he's got to do everything right. So just to piggyback off that, I know personally, I've been friends with Jeff for, you know, over 30 years. His work extends beyond the police department. Jeff has been an integral part of the community. And in addition to his work at the police department, he's volunteered numerous hours at Calvary Chapel and at the Downey Unified School District. And Calvary Chapel pastor, assistant pastor and Downey Police Department chaplain Greg Kravik said Jeff's been extremely helpful in volunteering his services in the area of stage lighting for multiple plays and events at the church. He really is a jack of all trades. And before, before Jeff started volunteering at Calvary Chapel, he, they would hire a lighting company. So when he offered to do this, he's really saved the church money and he's done an excellent job. And we also spoke with Dr. Robert Jagalski, Dr. Doctor, can't get the words out tonight. Dr. Rob Jagalski, I usually call him Rob. But Dr. Jagalski is the Director of Student Safety at Downey Unified School District. And he also commented on the impacts that Jeff has made at the school district. For over 20 years, Jeff has volunteered to help provide professional lighting services for the district's middle school and high school plays and productions. Dr. Jagalski said, and he quote, "Jeff's expertise and contribution always takes each performance to a whole other level." "On behalf of the Downey Unified School District and the students and families he's helped throughout the years, we thank and congratulate him on his well-deserved award for serving our schools and community." And truly, that's what Jeff has done for over 40 years in the city of Downey. He's provided the utmost professional service to our community and for that, I, I have the utmost gratitude for you and I think you are so well-deserving of this honor. And thank you, Mayor, for recognizing him.
I just wanted to take a minute to thank Jeff for all the work he's done at the school district. I've seen him at a play after play after play at the high schools and the middle schools for well over 20 years. The performances would be nowhere near as quality if it were not for Jeff and his lighting and sound work, particularly at the middle schools. He has made a middle school play a delight to see as opposed to, okay, I'll go see the nice children. He makes it great and the work he has done has been excellent and all of it for free. We would not be able to ever repay Jeff for all the work he's done in the school district and the police department. He is a true rock of the community of Downey and thank you, Jeff.
And Jeff, because of your dedication and because of your, of your service to our police department and also to our school district, I have here with me the Mayor's Impact Award. And it reads, "In recognition of your selfless dedication, always going above and beyond for others, your heartfelt efforts and accomplishments have been of enormous value to our community and we are forever in debt. And we have, and because you have helped to further a common goal of making our city a better place, we are awarding you with the Mayor's Impact Award. So thank you."
They asked me if I wanted to say something. That's not really my thing because I'm not a speaker, I'm a weeper and I'm ready to weep. And just to even the turf, I am a bear. But I did have one class at Downey High School as well. They bussed us over for Latin, so. So we're, we're balanced here, but anyway, I, the, the whole, all of this that's going on is because I have a wonderful God that's looking out after me. They gave me these gifts, the abilities and talents to do this. I claim no responsibility or no ability to do what I do. And I'm thankful he's done that because I'm doing three schools right now all at the same time, along with the job over at the police department. So I couldn't do it without that because at 97 years old, I'm still going. But thank you very much. Thank you all for coming for this, this thing.
Zamora, awesome. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is city manager comments.
Thank you very much. I can't beat the comments that have been made tonight. I'm, I've, I've been addressing the potential candidates for city manager when I get a chance to talk at the council meetings of late because we all know that the people who are looking into the Downey community and the city manager job are going to be watching our meetings. That's what candidates for city manager jobs do. And I will tell you that the testimony about the city of Downey and, and how much people love it tonight has been just very obvious. And I say to my fellow colleagues in the city manager profession, don't you want to be part of this? This is really a, a special place and the people here really care. I love the fact that we got to honor both a current police officer and a retiree. I know that we've got some firefighters coming up for some recognition, maybe as early as the next meeting, maybe. next meeting, maybe. And and we look forward to that. I appreciate so much the positive comments from council members toward the efforts that the staff has been doing. And these days, on the on the leadership level, we're a little short on people. And yet, an awful lot of work has been getting done. And the recognition of Delfino for the work that he's done in Public Works, the recognition for the parks and recreation programs that has been made. And I will tell you across the board, the staff here is a pleasure to work with. So thank you, council members, for all those positive comments tonight. We, I have just a couple of things to report on that I'm happy to report. One, and this is kudos to the Community Development Department, our housing element that the council just adopted, has already been approved by State Housing Community Development Department. So that is an accomplishment that many cities in this state never do succeed in reaching. So congratulations to Downey and to Crystal and the Planning Commission and everybody who's touched this, the City Council, of course, in getting our housing element adopted. We're happy tonight on the agenda that we've got some long awaited projects, and I'm sure council members will mention that. Our Fire Station Four project is the bid is up for bid award tonight. I'm hearing, yeah. And and we're grateful for that. Again, I'm grateful to Public Works and Delfino's team and other people who have been involved in in moving that along. And it has taken some time, but it's going to be done. It's going to be done right. And I'm appreciative of that. Very appreciative of the service that the fire department has provided, working out of other stations while this work has been done. But it's getting done. We also have recruitments for two positions that'll be vacant at the end of December for for Public Works Director and Finance Director, two incumbents that will have plenty of time to try to embarrass and appreciate before their time is up. But we are working on that with hopes that when we have new City Manager ready to come on board, that that manager can be part of developing that team. It's a great opportunity for a new City Manager to be able to come into a place and have the opportunity to develop new members of the team to join some very, very solid existing teammates. And then just, I want to mention the Tacos neighborhood. I'm not going to go into further description, but the Manz, I'll call it the Manzanar Meldar neighborhood. I only see one of my newfound friends from the neighborhood right now, but they've learned to show up later at the council meeting. So whether they're coming or not, I just trying to keep our promises to them. We do have an item on the November tenth agenda that we're working on to make whatever findings that the city needs to make in order to be able to move forward with this barricade test that we're committed to doing. And that will be on the November tenth City Council agenda. Tonight, the council has identified several things that you'd like me to follow up on. We have a new policy about putting items on the agenda. I didn't hear people say they wanted to put items on the agenda, but I heard was you'd like follow up on a number of issues. And I'm happy to do that unless there's any objections to any of them. They included, just provide some information on the tree canopy and how that relates to other cities' tree canopies, the restriction, potential restrictions on chain link fences. I know some cities do, in fact, restrict chain link fences, at least plain chain link fences. We can look into how that's done. The Narcan spray issue, we'll check on our library and Barbara J. Riley and Space Center to see where that stands. We'll talk about providing space at the at the Barbara J. Riley Center, is that where you said, for the the two groups that you mentioned and the programs they do. We'll report back to the council on what the opportunity for that may be. And obviously, we care a great deal about the issues related to street paving. It's been a remarkable program this city has pulled off in the last couple of years on street paving. And there is more to do. And we're trying to stay very much on on task there. And of course, the enforcement on speed control. I know that there's nothing our police department wouldn't like more than to have more resources to hit that even harder. And and they are doing a great job with what they've got. I think that's the bulk of what I had to report on, so I will turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you. I will now take public comment on agenda, non-agenda, and consent calendar items next. As I mentioned at the start of the meeting, tonight, we are using a new system to conduct public comment. If you did not receive a number and wish to speak, please proceed to the back of the room, and Lisa Fox will provide you with a number. And she's actually located in the back, waving her hand. So if you have not received a card, please make sure you get a card from Lisa. Before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. Speakers who violate these rules and cause a disruption will receive one warning and then be removed from the meeting. Violations of the rules of decorum for council meetings may also result in an administrative fine under the Downey Municipal Code or citation for a misdemeanor under Penal Code Section 403. The City Council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction and invites the public to do so during the City Council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the City Council to conduct the public business and affair in efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. We expect that everyone who participates in today's meetings, from the members of the council here on the dais, to staff, to the members of the public in attendance, do so with respect and dignity. Please refrain from using profanity, name-calling, or behaving in a way that disrupts this meeting. This includes yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupts or disturbs a meeting. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the City Council. Any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking, and any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. I remind speakers that your comments must be addressed to me directly and not to any other council or staff member or the audience. City Clerk Juarte, have we received any written public comment to be incorporated into the record?
We have not, Mayor.
City Clerk Juarte, do we have the number of speakers who will be speaking?
Yes, Mayor, we have a total of thirteen.
Thirteen? Okay. Based on the number of speakers that will be speaking, each speaker will have three minutes to address the City Council. And I remind everyone, as soon as you approach, please provide your number to our city clerk, and your time will begin once you are at the podium. So may I have Speaker number one? Please come up.
What? It's on my lap. Hello, Council. My name is, sorry? Ready?
You may proceed, sorry.
Okay. Hello, Council. My name is Oscar Sisco. I've been a resident of Downey for twenty-five years. I was born and raised here. I am a son of Downey through and through. I'm a Viking. I was on the water polo team. And I remember whooping Warren's butt every single year. So I just had to mention that, that there's other sports out there. But I'm here to address this project that Metro of Los Angeles has been working on. Metro in partnership with community stakeholders and community members along the seven-ten corridor is working on an investment plan to identify multimodal transportation projects and improve and programs that improve mobility, reduces congestion, improves community health, and facilitates the flow of goods in the future. And so I work for the Council Mexican Federation. We're a local nonprofit. And we have reached out to the City Manager and to a couple council members. Mario Trillo, thank you so much. You've been helping us trying to facilitate this meeting. What we want to do is collect surveys here in the city of Downey. Metro LA is just collecting surveys. All they're doing is collecting community input to see what needs to be done in the city. We're not asking the city to commit to anything. We just want a venue to collect community input and to see what the residents of Downey want to see along the seven-ten corridor. As we know, the seven-ten expansion project failed due to community backlash. And now they're going to reallocate seven hundred fifty million dollars to the community surrounding the seven-ten. And Downey is part of that corridor. And I believe that the residents of Downey have a right to voice their opinion on what they need, what they're going to do with that money. And so I would invite the council and to the city managers and Mark Scott, you've been doing a phenomenal job being a steward and a caretaker of this of the position. Meanwhile, we find someone else. But I invite you to come talk to us. I've reached out to your office. And please just have a conversation. That's all we're asking. We're not asking for anything more, nothing less either. But as a resident of Downey, I don't want to be ignored either. And a lot of the staff from the organization to live here. So I hate to come here and to say that. But really, I would like to engage more with the city and to just raise community engagement with the city as well. That's all we want to do. And so I thank you for you guys listening to me. And hopefully, we'll be in touch soon. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. And thank you for joining us here this evening. And I'd like to see if maybe we can have a conversation, maybe have a meeting, so that way we can discuss this. Okay, thank you. Speaker number two, please make sure and provide your card to our city clerk. You may proceed, Mr. Herman.
Well, I'm pretty embarrassed tonight to know that I got one extra minute to talk about my First Amendment and why the former Assemblywoman wishing to be has targeted me for the First Amendment. Let's face it. Do you see anything racist about this? Does anyone see anything racist about this? It's just a sign, mommy. And when you violate our constitutional right, and I'll read it into the record, because, again, the political arena is often abusive. And mommy from Meta knows that. Mr. Trillo worked for the DA knows that. Mr. LaPlante worked for the schools, forty years plus, knows that. And I'm going to say politely and gently, so not to offend you. And this deals with law. How far is the nigger going to? Yeah, this is what we're going to do to the niggers. A dirty nigger. Send the Jews back to Israel. Oh, that sounds offensive. Let's give them back to the dark garden to save America. Let's go back to constitutional betterment. Bury the niggers. We tend to do our part. Give our states our rights. Freedom for us whites. Nigger will have to fight for every inch he gets from now on. Brandon Burgers, Ohio, US 39544, nineteen sixty-nine. And why do I say this time after time? Because words are not racist. Words describe the conditions that we're facing with inflation and bad government of corruption. And we're tired of it. The American people don't want breaks. The American people don't want to hear the bullshit of Mark Scott. The American people want action. And I'm a man of words, physically with action. Temporarily, I say what I have to say to prove that America will be saved eventually, sooner or later. Now, sit down, Catherine Alvarez. Don't interrupt me while I'm speaking.
Mr. Herman.
Thank you. So you see Homeland Security at two one three 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 zero nine eight zero three. Let's verify it. FBI three ten four seven seven six five six five. Let's verify it. Because, again, fentanyl is not killing people. It's ignorance of you parents not telling your fucking stupid children to stay away from drugs. Stay away from alcohol and stop fucking sleeping, LaPlante, and pick up a beer and wake up. So again, there's nothing wrong with being a homosexual, but keep it to yourself. For God hates homosexuality. Romans one, verses twenty-six through twenty-seven. Because, again, America is doomed. Fuck you. Forty-two AC, nineteen eighty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Okay, can I please have a invite up Speaker number three?
Good evening. Big meeting before the election. All the sports people up here. I wonder how many's played sports up here? And at what level? That'd be interesting to know. Anyway, Downey residents are all happy escorting Mr. LaPlante over here. Everybody's just peachy keen. The staff's doing a great job. And for the most part, they are. We all know that. And Measure S brings in ten million dollars a year. And that's what you're supposed to be doing with it, is fixing the roads and the sidewalks and the parks. It's not a special deal like you're doing anything above and beyond what you're supposed to be doing. That's your job. Not to give us Dia de los Muertos, or Havana nights, or, you know, the gay picnic, or anything like that. We want our lights. We want our streets paved. We want our police. We want our fire. And we want our sewers to flow. That's what we want. We want smaller government. We don't need you to do all this other stuff. Now, currently, we're, the residents are paying on three bonds, two for Cerritos College and one for Downey Unified. And we've still got about twenty-four years to pay on those things. And if you got your property tax statement, they're right there on that for you. You can check it out. Now, under Blanca Bachecco's leadership, we are being asked, and she endorses this, to support another bond from Cerritos College, another five-hundred million dollar bond for thirty years. And Downey Unified wants to put another five-hundred million dollar bond for another thirty years. That's five bonds. Five. Now, this is after the mayor signed on to a ten percent increase in our fees, our schedule of fees. And then they want, just for fun, they want to throw in the hotel tax, which she's all in favor of also. So I think we're being asked to provide a little too much here. Now, the question is, are the voters going to make a choice about our mayor, Blanca Bachecco? Are they going to reward her for squashing information, not being allowed to be put on the agenda, like the Central Basin Water District? We haven't heard anything on our agenda, Mr. Scott, about any of this stuff. Now, she may be getting information from the interim city attorney from West Hollywood, because that's the tactic they use. They throw everything on the consent calendar, and nothing gets, no conversation about it. We haven't had hardly any public hearings on any of this stuff. But anyway, you're going to have to choose whether you're going to promote Blanca Bachecco to Assembly, or you're going to to Assembly or you're going to keep her here, keeping in mind that the mayor is the one that casts a deciding vote to make Catherine Alvarez our mayor pro temp. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have speaker number four.
Lee Squire, Vietnam veteran, Cold War veteran, civil rights advocate, auditor fraud examiner. Mayor and city council and people of Downey, Santa Fe Springs, Bellflower, Bell Gardens, Bell and Cudahy. Subject Blanca, Blanca Pacheco, state assembly candidate. Campaign literature omissions from the voters. Questions to the mayor and Assembly candidate Pacheco. Do you support critical race theory for our children in our public schools? Do you support transgender indoctrination of our children in public schools? Do you support biological males competing in girls and women's sports? Are parents domestic terrorists for exercising freedom of speech for the U.S. Constitution and what we veterans shed our blood for? Why did you conceal Amlo Law Firm from your campaign literature? Aren't you proud working for that law firm that betrayed the people of all these cities? Did you send letters and emails to the LADA and the grand jury exposing fraud and corruption at Central Basin Municipal Water District? Did you send letters to Chacon demanding the removal of fraudster Alex Rojas? Why did you conceal the knowledge of two lawsuits attacking freedom of speech against woman board member of Central Basin, Letitia Vasquez Wilson, from Weesa People? In closing from a veteran, defund the police, you can go to hell. Parents are domestic terrorists, you can go to hell. American flag is racist, you can go to hell. U.S. Constitution is racist, go to hell. And George Washington is a racist, you go to hell. That concludes my presentation.
I just wanted to note for the record, Mayor Pro Tem Alvarez had to leave because she was not feeling well. Next, we have speaker number five.
Tonight, I'm reading from the book of 2 Timothy, chapter three. But know this, that in the last days perilous times will come. For men will be lovers of themselves, lovers of money, boasters, proud blasphemers, disobedient to parents, unthankful, unholy, unloving, unforgiving, slanderers, without self-control, brutal, despisers of good, traitors, headstrong, haughty, lovers of pleasure rather than lovers of God, having a form of godliness but denying its power. And from such people churn away. For of this sort are those who creep into households and make captives of gullible women loaded down with sins, led away by various lusts, always learning and never able to come to the knowledge of the truth. This is a description of women who choose to participate in abortion. They're gullible women loaded down with sins, led away by various lusts, always learning and never able to come to the knowledge of the truth. And I remind you that Jesus, the Lord, said, I am the way and the truth and the life. No one comes to the Father except by me.
Thank you. Next, we have speaker number six.
Where'd you get that sweater at? Mike Greenspan, the Jew who's not going back to Florida, you racist, anti-Semitic, anti-Christ Catholics. Well, oh, and I want to thank for the prayer referring to Jesus because when you catch some cheating in a Christian league, they jerk their dicks and blame the umpire. I didn't play sports, I've umpired it. And some of the worst behavior is in those Christian leagues. I guess Jesus lets you cheat. Now, I want to apologize for, for the pollution on the airwaves, be it the radio, the TV. You got this guy named Rick Caruso. Oh, and by the way, the Rick Caruso guy who talks about corruption, he was endorsed by one of those three racist wetbacks in Los Angeles. Gil Sadio endorsed, of course, one fellow racist anti-Semite will always go for another racist anti-Semite, anti-Christ Catholic. And when we were talking, they had a thing in the LA Times asking Karen Bass and Rick Caruso, something they wanted to share with them. And Bass showed her a Korean restaurant, she brought the reporter and said, yes, I'm black, but I love Korean food. And with her former stepchildren from the marriage where she was divorced from the guy, but they got along real well. And Caruso, although he put the emphasis on his church, didn't share it with the reporter. Why? Because he's probably there with the children, holding them down so he can fuck every choir boy, because that's what the priests do. And it's a church over there by USC with the name of Rick Caruso on it. So when people go to vote, let it be known that Caruso is in bed with those priests that are fucking our children. Now, if that's acceptable to you, make him your next mayor. By the way, he's pro-choice. Yes, he chose to give to Englander every time, the crookedest pig on the face of the earth. In fact, Englander would be on the Board of Directors of the Association of Independent Cities. Councilmember Sean Ashton's failure, he never went to the meetings because he had to go get bribes, money bribes, hotel room bribes, liquor bribes, pussy bribes. Yes, good old Mitchell Englander. And there's other crooked pigs in LA. There's a dirty nigger pig who's in the Bloods and he, in his jail cell, he would wear red. A couple of pigs out of Hollywood, the Starsky and Hutch that would rape women while on patrol. Oh, you got a paycheck for raping. Isn't that wonderful? We need 1,500 more of those, right, Caruso? And don't forget, Hunt Hans brother appointed Caruso to the police commission and here's one of our failures. Thank him.
Speaker number seven.
Good morning, members of the city council, Mr. Scott and staff.
Good evening. Like to talk a little bit this evening about government in general and some aspects of government. Like to talk about the power of government. A prime example, in my opinion, of the power of government has been what happened recently. The city of Los Angeles and some of its council people, they refuse to resign under what was said. And it just goes to show you that they still want to maintain their power grab. Another aspect of government I want to talk about is the, in my opinion, the, the inclusion or the advancement of state government in terms of the public housing element. We've seen that early on in the previous years, but in the last year or two, they can see that there's more government involvement with the public housing specter. And I would assume that in the future, with regards to what's happening in Sacramento and the constituents up there in Sacramento, that the housing business and administration should be aware of more government inclusion. The last thing about the government I'd like to speak to, again, is in my opinion, government waste. Recently, the Employment Development Department of the state, the EDD, by their own estimate, has shown approximately a $20 billion, that's what it'd be, a $20 million, billion dollar amount of money that has been wasted by fraud. Now, will we see any of that money back? Possibly some, but I doubt if there will be most of that money returned. And so the balance of the money that has not been returned falls on the taxpayers. We're screwed. We have to pay for that absence. And the last thing I want to talk about in terms of the government is the spending of government. I want to pick on what's happening with the high-speed bullet train. That was started in 2008 with the promise to the people of California that the perspective or estimate to build that, build a train from Los Angeles to San Francisco was going to be approximately $30 billion, whether it be $30 billion, and was expected to be completed around 2020. Well, what's happening is that they've only built 171 miles of it and the prospective cost is 310 billion. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have speaker number eight?
I almost hate to join what has been going on tonight and question whether I even wanted to get up here and share my thoughts because of the behavior of the previous speakers. But it addresses what I want to talk about tonight. As previously referred, the LA City Council has recently exposed, was exposed for the way that they feel and talk about their constituents behind closed doors. I would like to address the behavior of our own city council member, Mario Trujillo. For those of you that attended or watched the last council meeting, they saw Mr. Trujillo mock and show disdain for the homeowners of Downey, those that he pledged to serve. Like the LA City Council members, he feels free to demean those that have spent a lifetime committed to building this city. Most of us began as renters. I did. At times, I worked numerous jobs to make my homeowner's dream come true. Mr. Trujillo is probably the wealthiest city council member, owning a home in Downey and commercial property. He does not just represent those that share our political leanings, his political leanings, excuse me. He pledged to represent us all. Yet with angry, baseless accusations, he seeks to divide our community. Leaders do not divide. They work to find solutions. Name-calling is what you do when you have nothing meaningful to offer. I call on you today, Mr. Trujillo, to publicly apologize for your recent angry, baseless accusations towards your constituents. At this time, our city needs genuine, good leadership that unites us as a community, not divides us. Mr. Trujillo, I call on you to be a good leader.
Thank you. Next, we have number nine.
Good evening, Mayor Pacheco and council members. I'm Dorothy Pemberton. I first wanted to speak about Havana nights, that it was a wonderful event with the city coming out to socialize and experience the Cuban culture. I'd like to congratulate those that thought of changing the location and bringing it down from the rooftop so that more can enjoy it and it be seen. Parks and Rec director Jason Chacon did a fantastic job as air traffic controller with all the different areas. I suggest the food trucks next year only park on one side of the street and not all the way down to City Hall. It was extremely congested with people waiting in line. Next, I and the recall supporters are appalled that we are blamed for costing the city money because of the Alvarez recall. Last council meeting, opening statements, Mario Trujillo, Councilman Trujillo, excuse me, slammed the residents for not investigating candidates who are running for office before they vote, namely Catherine Alvarez and her past criminal history. Then goes on to say it will cost the city $1.5 million for a special election. Is that is wrong for a councilperson to attack his own constituents for doing their civil right and requesting a revote? It's more infuriating that the tone and diction of his words to all of us in the room. We are not on trial for anything. And if he wants to speak of costing the city money, let's not forget the Councilman Alvarez and Ashton, who abandoned his position, voted to fire city manager Gilbert Levis, which cost the city almost half a million dollars in severance pay. I don't hear Councilman Trujillo complaining of that. Maybe if questions are to be asked on a candidate application who runs for city council about their past criminal history or arrests, yes, we would know. I think Councilwoman Frometta asked for that last year and thank you if it's been done. Lastly, this comment is again on the conduct of city council and at public comments. Mayor Pacheco, both you and former Mayor Frometta have sat in that chair and endured so much verbal abuse from agitators, non-residents and knuckleheads for months and years. You both have sat there quietly and did not engage with the public unless it was to quiet the crowd or throw those out disturbing the meeting. You have base, grace and decorum, and I applaud you. You both set the standard and raised the bar in showing and trying to teach others what good behavior and conduct are. It is also not your job to respond as a councilperson. So last meeting, who lashed out at a resident for no reason at all? Councilman Trujillo. His outburst was unacceptable. Regardless of what you all think of the person speaking, your position should not allow you to talk back to the audience, especially name-calling. We hope that you never have that type of outburst again. Let's not be like LA City Council with name-calling. Weren't we all appalled with those comments? We are better than that and Downey should always raise the bar and set the standard.
Please. Thank you, Dorothy. Next up, we have speaker number 10.
Hello, my name is Jeff McAken. Thank you for letting me speak, Madam Pacheco and council members. So first off, I'd like to start with about a year ago, I came to the city and wanted to bring up seeing about getting pickleball courts brought into the city of Downey since that's the most popular growing sport in the United States. So I want to say that with the help of Ms. Frometta, she, she backed me up and especially with Jason Chacon, he's the, the main guy that made it happen. I played pickleball today over at Independence Park. So congratulations on getting that permanent marking there. It's a different way of doing it by setting up a reservation, but we played there. It's a great, great location for that. So I think it's going to catch on and it'll be really popular over there, probably leave up the nets permanently at, once we get to that point. But good job and thanks for doing that. Next, I've lived here in Downey all my life, except for when I was in the military. I look around, I see these pillars of fairness, caring, citizenship, et cetera, et cetera. And I have friends, relatives that have been teachers here in the Downey Unified School District. Some still are, some aren't, but it was all about character counts. So the missing part-time councilperson doesn't represent what this city has taught all of our kids about character counts. So yeah, a million dollars, it's very unfortunate that taxpayers are going to have to pay it. I say money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have speaker number 11.
Is it Deep pockets, right?
We traded.
Oh, okay.
We traded.
There you are. All right.
Okay. Greetings, council members. Last year, when I was asked to join the recall Catherine Alvarez committee, I realized that I had not attended a council meeting since my children were students at Warren and involved in youth and government. I watched young high school students sit in those chairs up on the dais and behave better than one of you. Good, you're back. They didn't name-call. They didn't have immature, unprofessional outbursts. They were young leaders to be proud of. I wish I could say the same of one of you up there tonight, Mario Trujillo. In your opening comments last week, you were, as somebody else said, filled with angst. But that angst paled in comparison to your outbursts and truly epithets needlessly directed at a fellow Downeite. I wish I could say that my city's council today ran as smoothly as it did just a few short years ago. I think we all know it doesn't vote yes for the recall of Catherine Alvarez.
Thank you. Thank you. Dee, did you want us to speak? Okay.
Be nice if she could sit in the front row like a disabled person.
Can we help her with them? Yeah.
You know how uncomfortable it is to sit between a seat with a buck leg, arthritis? Why can't I sit up front like a disabled person?
Mr. Herman. This is your first warning, another outburst, and you will be removed from the council chambers. That is a warning and your only warning.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, Mayor Blanco, and good evening. I should say. We got that all together there. And to our esteemed council members, I see one can't join us for my speech, I'm so sorry. And to our city and public workers, I really do appreciate all of you, and I'm so glad I live in Downey. I want to talk to you about our community elections on November 8th. I live in Mayor Blanco's district.
Yes.
I'm here to ask you to think about who you vote for. I could, if I could, I would vote for Claudia, and I'd vote for Hector. I have watched Claudia enter four years here on the council. She doesn't just think of her district, but for our whole city. She doesn't do things that have to do about the petty things. She doesn't just do the big things, that attending and doing this and doing that. She takes care of the citizens that go unnoticed. Thank you. I pray that you will return to the city council. And at my age, I have a pretty good communication with the guy up there. Social has been an active member of our city. Running against Hector is a person named Monterio or something like that, who voted for Ocus Locas, the sports bar with the barely clad girls. Yeah. Please know who you're voting for. We do not have or want any more recall, which has cost my city a large amount of money and me a lot of hours, a lot of thinking, a lot of wanting for our city. I want you to know, I'm watching what all of you do. And I'm going to be here for another 25 years.
Thank you. Can I please have number 13 come forward?
13 left the meeting.
Okay. Number 14?
What in? Call my number, partner. I think that works. Can I begin? Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Joaquin Beltran. I'm running for city council. Mi nombre es Joaquin Beltran. Estoy corriendo para el consejo aquí en Downey. And I want to share with you why I'm running for the Downey dream. So my story is of the American dream. And for my family, that American dream was Downey. I grew up in a small home with aunts, uncles, cousins. My mom, she worked at a sweatshop in downtown. My dad is a machine operator. We would stop close after school, door to door, trying to get to that American dream. And eventually, we started a small business that got uprooted through eminent domain. And so we had to find a new location. Along the way, when I was roughly nine, 10 years old, well, it was actually when I was nine, my mom would drive here because she worked with the finance company here. And she said, Joaquin, my dream is to live in Downey. And a year later, we bought a house in Downey. And so at 18 years old, when we got uprooted, I came to the city council and advocating to get a business approved, our small business approved, which we did. Unfortunately, the process was very hard for our family, especially my mom. She got sick, asked me to drop out of school to help run the business, and that's what I did. I did that full-time for about three to four years. In the process, worked with the Chamber of Commerce here, helped provide resources for the Christmas parade. And I realized that the health of family, the health of community, the health of business, it's all connected together. And so we were able to achieve the Downey dream. But the Downey dream is becoming harder for so many families here. It's becoming harder to live here, to buy here, to be safe here, and to start a small business here. Right now, we're not safe, unfortunately, with the pandemic that has been raging. The elderly are actually dying at a higher rate in L.A. County than they were last year. That's unacceptable. People are experiencing long COVID. Crime has increased. The cost of living has gone up with food, gas, homes, and rent. And small businesses are struggling to make payroll, to keep their doors open. So we got to focus on what's important. And what's important is health, it's safety, it's economic growth. I am a son of Downey, having lived here for 30 years, having started a small business 20 years ago that's contributed to the economic growth of the city and to the city budget. And so that's why I'm here. I'm fighting for the Downey dream. If you'd like to join me, please go to joaquinbeltran.com. I would love your support. Let's win this race. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I next have speaker number 15?
Yes, you may have speaker 15 up here, interesting system. Okay, so I'd like to comment as well on the elections. So why don't we start from the top, District 2. In District 2, what's really important is to keep Mr. Montoya out of the city council. That's because Mr. Montoya is weak, is a coward. You know, he's just running around trying to get elected, much like the mayor. So we don't want that. And we also, you know, don't be fooled, he's entirely with Mr. Trujillo. So if you, you know, you're disapproving of Mr. Trujillo, you don't want Arturo Montoya on the city council. So the other two, take your pick. You know, take your pick. So District 4, District 4, Ms. Prometta also likes to pretend like she is standing up for the city. And people talk about the transition and the turmoil. It's actually been a takeover. So Mr. Trujillo did a hostile takeover of the city council. Yes, he got Ms. Alvarez and Mr. Ashton, but really, it's all about him. So that's why it's very important, you know, if people are thinking about that. But Ms. Prometta, you know, she, you know, is right there with him. You know, there's all these conversations that are going on. And so it's like, if she's really opposing him, then, you know, why does she continue in the back doors? Why does she work with him, you know? So, you know, so if you're really standing against Mr. Trujillo's takeover, you know, why do you invite his allies? Why do you have Mr. Vasquez over there, you know, giving the speeches when they orchestrated the ousting of Levas? So why is that? And you know that. So, you know, if you're going to be truly standing up for what you are saying that they're bringing, well, why don't you actually do that? Instead, you welcome them with open arms. So I don't think you're being truthful to the residents, even the ones that support you. Again, and again, you're also with the mayor, who has also betrayed the principles of Downey. So really, there's, now, on the council, now, if you want change, I think it's time to look at the other alternatives. So then beyond that, the Assembly, Ms. Pacheco is also completely, you know, corrupt. You know, she violates all the laws. She blocks people on social media when they disagree with her. So we don't block that. And then she's triggering even some lawsuits. And then she goes and deletes things on her text messaging. And it's like, we already have all that anyway. You know, the FBI is already in Long Beach. It's not going to be a very long time until they get over here. So you people are corrupt, you've been corrupt. That's why thankfully so many people have decided to vote for change. And, you know, that's what's going to keep on happening. The people are going to take back the control.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
That's the last speaker, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
So ordered by the mayor.
Sorry, ma'am.
Madam Ami, good evening. Baba Booey. There's two numbers I'd like to give up, and that's two Homeland Security number, area code 213-330-9803. FBI area code 310-477-6565. Mr. Trujillo, good evening, sir. I think those numbers are towards you. You are a Baba Booey, jerk. So I think, I mean, really, how many people are really happy with Mr. Trujillo?
Sir, please turn around.
Baba Booey and Howard Stern for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have one more speaker.
Hello, city council, Madam Mayor. I wasn't going to come up, but I think it is so important to know that, sure, there's some people that may not be happy with the things that you guys do or the decisions that you guys make on behalf of the residents, but I think the majority of the city is very happy with the work that you guys do. I think each of the people that are sitting here today, I'll be very careful what I say, the people that are actually sitting here today represent a different part of the city very well. I see the work that you guys do. I see you guys out. I try to go to as many city events too, because I love my city. And I do believe what Councilwoman Prometta says, that engaged communities are strong communities. But I do think that you guys represent the city well. Councilwoman Prometta, I know you're going to win your reelection. You're the strongest candidate for District 4. Good luck to whoever's running for District 2. Madam Mayor, I know you'll represent as well in the Assembly. Mr. Trujillo, I think you represent District 5 very well. And I just want to say thank you, guys. Sorry that sometimes some people disagree, but I think you guys are doing amazing, and I'm really proud to be a Downey resident. It's because of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, now, I move to close public comment.
Is there a second? So ordered by the mayor. And thank you all for joining us here this evening. Think we're going to proceed on in this, or something pressing that needs to be addressed?
Well, I think it's important that we note that what the point of public comment is, is to address items on the agenda, the consent calendar, and items not listed on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. By my count, only half of the people who spoke, spoke on a topic that even tangentially, within the jurisdiction of the city council, and two people came up and made their campaign speeches, because the television cameras are on. We need to, I know we've made some great progress in this area. I hope that in the future, the city can do something to make sure that we try to keep people on the topic that's actually legally required, the jurisdiction of the city council. I understand that attacking members of the city council for their beliefs or actions is part of that. That's the tangential ones. I do want to commend Oscar for actually coming in and bringing in a topic that actually qualified for that, this agenda item. But I'll note that not one person talked about an item on the agenda.
Okay. Now's the time for consent calendar items. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
Madam Mayor, I need to abstain from item number 12 because of real estate I own in proximity to this item. I think I also need to abstain from the minutes of November 9th, 2021, and September 27th, 2022. Thank you.
I think you're abstaining from, excuse me. I need to abstain from the special meeting minutes of December 7th, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of November 9th, 2021, as I was not a member of the council at that time.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion? And a second to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Please vote.
The consent calendar is approved with Councilmember LaPlante abstaining from the meeting minutes of December 7th, 2021, and November 9th, 2021. Councilmember Trujillo abstaining from the minutes of November 9th, 2021, and September 27th, 2022, and item number 12. And Council and Mayor Protem Alvarez absent.
Okay, thank you. Next up are administrative reports. There are two administrative reports this evening. Resolution to increase administrative fines for violations of Article 4, Public Welfare Morals and Policy, Chapter 15, Speed Contest or Exhibitions of Speed, and Chapter 16, Unmanned Aircraft Systems Drones. Adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Downey, modifying the administrative fine schedule for violations of the Downey Municipal Code for spectators at illegal speed contests and exhibitions of speed, and violators of regulations for unmanned aircraft systems drones. Interim City Manager Scott, is there a staff report?
Yes, and I want to acknowledge and thank our city prosecutor, Jim Eckhart, for doing this report and would invite him forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The resolution that's being presented today is a resolution that the council actually requested that we bring back. As the council's aware, the city, one of the city's enforcement remedies that it utilizes on a relatively regular basis is the issuance of an administrative citation, which imposes an administrative fine on people who violate provisions of the Downey Municipal Code. That is typically utilizing the alternative of the city exercising the remedy to criminally prosecute someone or to proceed against them through an administrative or civil, or some, a different administrative or civil remedy. Currently, the city's default administrative fine for violations of the Downey Municipal Code are one hundred dollars for a first offense, two hundred dollars for a second offense within a twelve-month period of time, and five hundred dollars for a third offense or greater offense during a twelve-month period of time. Given the specific dynamics of two ordinances that were enacted by the City Council last month, those specifically relating to being a spectator at a speed contest or exhibition of speed, and those dealing with violations of the city's drone regulations, given the dynamics of the public safety issues that those violations involve, as well as invasions of privacy specifically in dealing with the drone regulations, it's believed that the one hundred, two hundred, and five hundred dollar administrative fines are inadequate to actually remedy those issues. Administrative fines are imposed for two primary reasons. One, to punish violations of the city's laws. Two, to deter future behavior that violates those laws. And so it was believed that a higher fine would be appropriate and would serve the city's ends in meeting both those needs of punishment as well as deterring future violations. And what's being proposed to the City Council is to amend the city's administrative fine resolution specifically for violations of the drone regulations and the, being a spectator at speed ordinance, at a speed contest or exhibitions of speed. What's being proposed is that for violations of the spectator ordinance, that the first violation or the first offense would be punishable by an administrative fine of five hundred dollars. For a second violation at a thousand dollars, and for a third offense or greater would be within a, would be a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine. With respect to the drone regulations, what's being proposed is a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine for a first offense, a five-hundred-dollar fine for a second offense, and a one-thousand-dollar fine for a third or greater offense. And again, this is being done so that the fines would be able to adequately punish and deter future criminal behavior. I am available if the council has any questions related to that.
Are there any questions or comments?
I do, Madam Mayor, if I may. Thank you, James. Now, let me ask you, what, with the, why are we, why are the fines for the drone versus the spectator and on the illegal speed contest different? Why can we have the same all the way across?
You can. So, so this is just a proposal, and really what we're doing is we're weighing and balancing all the factors of the activity that's being involved and what we think would be appropriate in order to deter that sort of behavior. So obviously, people who are involved and engaged in speed contests, that's something, the contest itself is something that is otherwise prohibited by state law under the vehicle code. And the city's ordinance was dealt, was enacted in order to address the ancillary component of the speed contest, which would be the spectators, which both further and fuel the people who are involved in the speed contest desire to actually put on those speed contests. The usage of drone in and of itself is not illegal, right? I mean, so the ordinance doesn't prohibit drone usage. It's just violations would pertain to the manner in which they are being taken off or landing or otherwise operated. So it was believed that, my proposal would just be that it probably would take a lesser amount to adequately punish those sort of violations, because again, the underlying violation or the underlying usage of the drone is not illegal in and of itself. That being said, obviously, if the City Council felt that a higher amount would better suit those needs, the City Council is free to increase those amounts.
Then another question. Why isn't that thirty-six-month period? Why not a twenty-four-month period?
That actually should be a, a twelve-month. That, that's a misprint, actually. Typically, what's done with respect to administrative citations is it's a twelve-month period of time. There was a special, with respect to certain violations, we did increase those, and those were specific to fireworks. We actually increased it for thirty-six months because fireworks are more of a seasonal violation. And it's unlikely that you'll have someone who violates it multiple times within the same twelve-month period of time. So for those, it was actually increased to twelve months. This is actually-
That's not thirty-six months.
Correct. And this is, this is actually a typo. It should have been a twelve-month period of time as well.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, and I do see that in the staff report on the top. It does say twelve months.
Correct.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Mr. Eckhart, do these fines apply equally to minors and adults?
So administrative citations, as opposed to criminal citations, they, they are something that can be imposed as to anybody who is actually operating it. This is an administrative fine. It's not a criminal fine. Criminal fines obviously would be imposed by different court jurisdictions, as, as you're well aware. But these technically, yes, they could apply to minors as well as adults.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Yes?
If some, if someone disagrees, I get an administrative citation for being at a speed contest. I just happen to be walking my dog down the street. How do I contest that?
So there is an appeal procedure on the reverse side of the administrative citations. It does provide for the timeframe in which someone would need to file a request for an appeal. And then there are procedures outlined for how that person would be able to get a hearing in front of a hearing officer, at which point they'd be able to present their case to try and demonstrate why they're not responsible for the alleged violation.
And those are hearing officers?
The, I believe the city contracts with a organization called Data Ticket or Revenue Experts, and they provide a hearing officer who would then hear the evidence and make a determination.
Based, based upon?
The evidence that's presented. So although the issuance of an administrative citation is prima facie that the violation did occur, obviously, the violator would have the ability to present witnesses or evidence to testify himself at that administrative hearing in order to provide evidence as to why they may not be responsible for the violation.
Standard of proof is obviously not beyond the reach of the law.
It's preponderance of the evidence. Correct.
More likely than not that they did it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move to approve this, this ordinance with, with the change, again, to twelve minutes, twelve months, as opposed to thirty-six. And I would further ask city staff to make sure as, as this is approved and implemented that we do have in our social media platforms that this is out for the public and people understand and realize that we have increased our fines for speeding and also for those that are spectators as well.
And Councilmember Prometa, just, just again, so you're aware, this would also be an, an alternative or additional remedy from criminal prosecution, which violations of these ordinances would also be subject to.
Excellent. Thank you. I move to approve. Okay, is there a motion? A second? All right.
I have a question. I, I just wanna make sure that the councilwoman is adopting the recommendation from Mr. Eckhart on the different fines. Okay, then, you want a second?
Yeah.
Okay, please vote.
The motion is approved with Mayor Protem Alvarez absent.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Next, approve a professional services agreement with Venue Tech Management Group for the management and consulting services for the Downey Civic Theater and authorize the city manager to execute all future amendments to the agreement. Interim City Manager Scott, is there a staff report?
Yes, Jason Chacon, Director of Parks and Recreation, will decide the report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. At the previous council meeting, the City Council directed the city manager to have staff discuss with Venue Tech a proposed shorter term to the agreement than the original response to the RFP, which was a five-year term with a optional five-year amendment to it. In discussing with Venue Tech, we were able to come up with a shorter proposed term that would allow the contractor to continually be able to hire and train and retain theater staff, while we also were able to reduce the short and long-term length of the contract. So instead of a five-year deal upfront, it's a three-year deal with two optional three-year deals. Each of those options would come with the city being able to get out of that contract when that contract was up after those three years. The main reason being, the two-year term that was asked is just difficult for them to be able to hire. They hire staff directly for this facility. So in a two-year deal, there's a six-month clause to get out of it still. So in essence, in about three or four months, we would be right back into the RFP process, which would be difficult for them to hire retained staff to be able to get through the shows that we have coming up. I'm here and I can answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions or comments?
I, I do have some comments. And thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Jason. I understand where we are with this, and I, and I want our community members to know, well, I'm not very happy with this, with this deal. I would have preferred a two-year. We have, based on the information that you provided to us at the last council meeting, one, this was the only company that came to this RFP process. And considering we are a city in the middle of a lot of transitions, my, my biggest concern is we don't have the, the bandwidth, we don't have the staffing to man this theater. I'm not exactly happy, though, the terms in terms of cost. The five percent annual increase over the next couple of years also seem, seem a little bit more than what I would like to see for this. I, I know we've discussed the types of programming, and I know the city and our residents have been asking as well. I think we need to do a better job at explaining why a seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight-seat theater cannot get the type of shows and entertainment we would like. But having said all this, again, I'm not really happy with a three-year plan. I would like to, once we have a new council seated, and once we have a new city manager and more stability within City Hall, to really come up with, with a better plan for how this theater is going to operate moving forward. I still have a lot of concerns. I realize we do need to make a decision, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not really sure that this is the best plan and this is the best use of funds taxpayers' dollars for this, for this particular theater. But at the same time, I don't wanna see it closed. We do have a beautiful opportunity to continue to bring some entertainment for our youth, for our schools, for our seniors. We, we just need to get more creative. But at the same time, I know we don't have internally, Jason, you don't have the staff to man a theater. And we do need people with the experience and the expertise and the knowledge in the entertainment field to be able to manage that type of venue. And I'm not prepared, for my council colleagues, I am not prepared to also pull the plug. And, and this is a lot of money, but I'm not prepared to say I'd rather have this theater sit dark and empty for the next two, three years. And so I'm, I'm hesitant, but I, in, I don't see, I don't see us having another great choice. And I think the, the option to renew for another three years will, you know, it's, it's yet to be determined. But for the time being, I think this is the only, the only option we have. We just need to do a better job at communicating why to our residents we are making this investment and why we are where we are.
So I just wanna chime in. I've actually had the pleasure of sitting on the theater subcommittee for many years. I previously sat on the subcommittee with former mayor Alex Saab, and now with Councilmember Mario Trujillo. And I know the history that one day, one, at one point, we did actually manage the theater, and it didn't make sense economically speaking. We didn't have the sufficient number of staff to be able to manage ourselves, and that's why we hired Venue Tech. And there's always been this discussion amongst the Downey, the subcommittee as to the types of programs to bring in the types of shows. So every year, we've had that discussion. Jason has been involved in a discussion. And I just wanna commend you also, Jason, for the great job that you've been doing with the theater. You know, I don't, I also don't think that it's feasible for us to shut the doors for the Downey Theater. There's so many groups that utilize the Downey Theater, and we're always looking at creating shows that hopefully we may sit on this subcommittee in years to come. But I also agree, I don't think we can close the doors. And like you mentioned, Venue Tech was the only one that submitted their proposal. But I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to see if any other council colleagues have any questions. But I just wanted to chime in since I've actually served on the subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes.
Jason, thank you for negotiating them down. I could not support a five-year proposal. Three years, hmm. Two years would have been nicer, but you know, that's, that's the business world. You have to negotiate. I appreciate all the work the staff has put in to make this happen. I do urge the council as it goes forward that we've got to have a unified plan for arts, history, culture in this community and have an overall spending plan. Unfortunately, for way too long, it's all been siloed. You know, Stay Gallery, this, you know, the theater, some, you know, Dia de los Muertos, all these are in little silos instead of having a, some kind of unified plan. And then we can make a better decision on the theater. You're right, people just don't understand that a seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight-seat theater is not gonna pull in the Rolling Stones or Elton. They wanna know why. Well, why don't we get any big acts? Because they're playing SoFi? For sixty thousand seats? I, I support, I support this because it's, the other option is to put a padlock on the doors, and that's not a viable option.
Any other? No? Is there a motion? Well, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I, I move to approve.
And a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Thank you, Jason.
The motion is approved with Mayor Protem Alvarez absent.
Okay, the City Council meeting is now adjourned to a regular City Council meeting on Thursday, November tenth. You heard that correctly, November tenth, not November eighth, at, because of the election, at five-thirty PM. This council meeting is being adjourned in memory of retired Downey Fire Department Captain Fred Perry, El Monte Police Chief Ben Lowry, and all the lives lost due to COVID- nineteen. A moment of silence. The time is eight forty-two, meeting adjourned.